All right, and so with that, we will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. All members are appearing remotely. The meeting is being recorded. If anything goes haywire tonight, we can't finish this meeting. Anything on the agenda will be moved to the June first hearing day. So the first item on the agenda is public speak. If there's anyone who would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda tonight, you can raise your zoom hand or turn on your camera. Frankly unmute with this small crowd. Is there anybody that wants to talk about something not on the agenda? I see nothing. All right. So first item after that, Planning Board minutes. We got April thirteenth and May fourth.
I motion to approve the minutes from April thirteenth.
I'll second that.
All right, voting to approve the April thirteen minutes. James.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I am an I.
I motion to approve the minutes from May fourth.
Second that as well.
All right, voting to approve the May fourth minutes. Harry.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I am an I. Next up, we have an A and R for Donald Abel at one George Street. There's someone here to talk about that. Oh, looks like I got Mr. Abel in the audience here.
Don't muted. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Don. Good evening. How are you?
I'm all things. How are you?
Excellent. All right. So why don't you lay it on us? Tell us what's going on here.
I've got, there's a piece of property that's two parcels owned by the Glynniak family, and what they're looking to do is to reset the lots. So they, if we're looking at the plan, the lot, the area that's in question is this parcel A. It's, as it stands currently, it is part of the piece of property to the right that shows the brick house, and what they're looking to do is to take parcel A and combine that with the, what's identified as the land of Matthew and Linda Glynniak.
Curtis, do you have the ability to just throw that up on the screen?
I'm working on it. You got it.
So, Don, it, there's a little wrinkle here, right? Because the, the parcel A part will not have sufficient frontage, right? But it's, the idea is that it will just be absorbed into the neighbor's land once they own both?
The sole purpose will be to convey the, the land of Matthew Glynniak and that parcel A will now be combined to form one parcel, leaving the parcel that's at the intersection of Briggs and George Street as a, as a self-standing parcel that has, that complies with the zoning requirements.
Okay, so I think, I'm not sure if you talked to Curtis about this, but usually we put like a notation on a A and R like this, just to make clear that it's not, that the smaller lot will not be a buildable lot because it doesn't have sufficient frontage.
He did review that with me, and that's, that's perfectly acceptable.
Okay. Other Planning Board members, I don't know if you read Curtis's memo in a footnote on his memo, but that's, that's sort of the typical practice. I think it makes sense here where there, there will be frontage once that smaller lot is absorbed into the one next to it, but we can just put a notation on the plan, making it clear that it's not a legal lot, but we will subdivide or will allow it.
Okay.
James, question?
With the notation that it's not a buildable lot, I think it's totally within our bounds to endorse this. I plan on endorsing it. But I did just want to make one note that there's something Curtis noted too, that when it does, after the fact, get turned into a new lot, that seventy-five point six merged into the, oh, what, the other section there, that the, it'll be non-conforming, because I think of the distance of the, of the garage to the boundary, which has nothing to do with our endorsing this. Because it's not, you know, I, that was not going to stop our endorsing, at least not for me. But I think that it should be noted that you're heading toward a non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
Well, it's a non-conforming structure.
Yep. That's what I meant to say. Forgive me.
Yeah. So, so I reviewed that. Curtis was kind enough to review that with me. That, that bylaw was revised subsequent to, this plan, as you'll note, was drafted a few years ago. So the, the setback requirement for an accessory structure was added in two thousand and thirteen. And so Curtis made me aware of that. I reviewed it with my client, and he understands it's, it's on a slab. Should something, so the issue becomes if something happens to the building, we need to rebuild. We would have to approach the city about obtaining, whether it be special permit or variance, I don't know, or move the building.
Okay.
So the client is comfortable with that, and Curtis has made me aware of that.
Good, good point though, James. Thanks for raising that. Anybody else? These aren't public hearings, but is there anybody else with comments or questions regarding this, board members or public? I don't see anything.
I motion to endorse the, oh, did someone speak? Sorry. Okay, I motion to endorse the A and R for one George Street, Donald Abel.
With, with the notation?
Yes. Yes, with the notation.
And then, and the notation that I was going to propose is, this, this parcel's not a building lot. Endorsement does not confer any commentary on zoning or something, something of the like.
I rescind my motion. I re-motion to endorse the A and R at one George Street for Donald Abel with the aforementioned notation.
I will second the amended motion.
All right, we're voting to endorse with the notation. James.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I am an I. So Don will probably be able to get over and sign it by the end of the week in the planning office. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm assuming Curtis will just let me know when, when we're set.
I'll do exactly that.
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate your help.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right. Next up, we've got several items under other business, request for determinations of minor change, and the first one up is James Whitmer at one fifty Pleasant Street, updates to a two thousand special permit. Mr. Whitmer, how are you?
I'm very good. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Nor welcome. So why don't you let us know sort of what was permitted before and what you are changing now, and we can evaluate that.
I don't have, I beg your pardon. I don't want to be unprepared. I don't have the decision in writing in front of me. It's from December of two thousand, and it was a special permit allowing for certain uses for the former owners of the Paragon Building located at one fifty Pleasant Street. And I believe the upshot of the, the agreement was that, or the decision was that it disallowed residential units and I believe one other use group.
It says residential and retail, I think.
Residential and retail, okay. I had filed a permit for demolition to remove what would charitably be described as a garage in, in front of the building. It's not attached. It's a freestanding structure constructed of cinder block and tin, and stick with a metal roof. I was wanting to tear that down, flatten it, remove it, and put in additional parking. Oh, there we are.
Okay, so your, your plan, it looks like from the, the drawings we have, you're going to tear down that garage, and it's just going to be parking. There's not going to be any other uses there?
That's correct.
Okay, so it, it's not really changing. You're really just changing the, the prior permit in the sense that the garage that was contemplated in the first plan is now hopefully gone, and everything else remains the same?
Uh, yeah, that's right.
Any questions from Planning Board members?
No, seems minor to me.
Any comments or questions from the public? Don't see anything. All right. So I guess what we're looking for here is we would take a motion that the proposed modification is minor and doesn't require an amendment to the public or a special permit.
I saw motion for James Whitmer at one fifty Pleasant Street.
Second that.
All right, voting in favor, James.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I am an I. Good luck, Mr. Whitmer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
One thing I wanted, one thing I want to note before you leave the call, um, that you did note the, the, the limitations on uses. The only reason I want to bring this up is that if you ever want to amend those, I imagine the planning board would be happy to hear it out as well. That would likely require a reopening of the public hearing, even as old as the special permit is, any change of use usually is. But I think that, you know, if you ever wanted to do residential or retail uses in Paragon, the Paragon Building, the board would be more than happy to hear it out.
Sure thing.
Okay, just wanted to let you know over on the call. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Curtis. Good point. All right, next up is another request for determination of minor change for McDonald's at one twenty-one North Hampton Street. We have someone here for that.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Jim Cranston here with Bowler Engineering.
Good evening, Mr. Cranston. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Um, we've got a lot of stuff going on over there. Why don't you let us know what, what the changes are, and we can look at it?
Sure. So back in two thousand and nineteen, we seeked approvals for the remodel of that facility, modernization of the building and the site itself, improvements to ADA and the drive-through itself. That work did not require Planning Board approval at the time. We did get an RDA from the Concom. I know that the building is undergoing a small addition that was circulated through the building department. We did get a building permit modification for that. This last piece to the puzzle is associated with the drive-through. What they're looking to do is implement, it's called a side-by-side configuration, and really what it is, it's literally two order points or menu boards that are located side by side of one another. And really what it does, it makes the drive-through operation more efficient. I think with COVID and everything else that's been going on, it's just a better design. It's going to help car, get cars in and out of the site faster and reduce the queuing. I know at this site, there is a generous queue length, so it's, you know, it should not be backing in the street, and this is certainly going to improve things. I have two plans I submitted. I don't know if you want me to show the plan on the screen and just talk through what we're doing.
It's probably good. We can throw that. We've all looked at the plans, but just for
Sure.
the public.
You should have co-hosts, so you can probably share.
All right, so we are, we are overparked on the site. As you can, this is a plan overlaying existing conditions and proposed. The red features are existing features that would be removed or modified to, to accommodate the improvements, and we would need to lose seven spaces in the back. This is, this island is the, the middle island that is associated with the side-by-side, and you literally have, you know, a very similar setup. A menu board and an overhead canopy at each location. Everything is facing to the rear of the site, so you cannot see this from the street. And it basically would, you know, continue to operate that it does today. Because of the modifications, we're impacting the amount of pavement. So what we've done is we've proposed to remove some pavement back here and put in some grass, and with a, with a small depression, it's just going to help the stormwater maybe get a little bit of infiltration going on on the site, so that we're not increasing the amount of pavement. So that, that's really the, the project in a nutshell.
Do the, do those, Jim, do those spots have to be taken out because they're going to be too close to that second order, order queue? Is that right?
So we need to, you know, we need to get a delivery vehicle in and out of the site efficiently. And really, they, they need some additional space to maneuver in the back, so that's why we're, we're losing those spaces.
And then the only other question I had, I mean, if you're adding a second, I think that the technology we've seen for these drive-through windows is pretty remarkable as far as noise and light and stuff, but does this, is this going to increase sort of volume and either light or noise spillage? There's nobody really around you guys back there right now, but there is sort of wetlands and that kind of stuff.
Sure. So that, that's a good question. So the, the canopies do have a, a small LED light underneath, facing down. It certainly does not trespass beyond the, the limits of the parking lot. It's fairly confined. The menu boards themselves, I don't know if you know much about the, the technology to what was going in as part of the remodel project, but essentially their LCD screens, basically their TV screens, and they have the same technology as your smartphone, so it'll read the ambient light levels. If it's bright sunny day, the light levels of the menu board increase in intensity, and then at nighttime, they actually turn from white to black, similar to your phone dark mode. So no, this, this will not have any adverse impacts to this area.
That's what I was hoping to hear. I know those new screens are pretty impressive. And then the only other thing, can you just confirm that I think even with the removal of the seven, there's still sufficient parking under the zoning bylaws? Is that right?
Correct. Zoning requires fifty-eight, and we would have sixty-six spaces by removing those.
Do you know, have there been any parking issues on site in the past? I mean, are you ever looking around and saying there's no spots?
No, certainly not. No.
All right, I have no other questions. Planning Board members, James?
That's the questions I had.
Oh, I think you're muted, James. No. All right, no questions for James right now.
I, I have a question in the interim, at least. Where's the, where's the bulk trash receptacle for the site?
The bulk trash receptacle is right here in this enclosure.
Great, all right.
Yeah. So that would not have any impacts.
Any comments or questions from members of the public?
I actually do have one question about snow removal. Does it impact any snow removal issues or anything? Are you still stockpiling on site in winter or taking off, you know, removing the snow from site? What's the plan?
So I, I'll be honest, I don't know how they operate today. I would assume that if the, the parking areas are not in high demand, they would probably store some on site.
Okay.
They can probably store some more back here and, and possibly over here, but I think they, they'd continue to handle it the same way they do today.
Okay. James, I still can't hear you. So I would take a motion from someone else.
Wait, give me one second. I propose to, is it accept or approve the updates?
Well, it's basically a determination that the proposed changes are minor.
Yeah, so I propose that the proposed changes are minor to McDonald's one twenty-one North Hampton Street.
All right, can I get a second?
It's a motion, by the way, not a proposition.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right. Let's James for a second there.
Me now.
Yes.
Yep.
Aye.
So I don't know if you you heard the motion. Okay, so voting in favor of the motion that this is a minor change. We got James Arvis with an I. Chris.
Aye.
Harry. Harry.
Is he pretending to?
Did we lose Harry?
Actually, he looks frozen.
Didn't he also second the motion?
He did second the motion, and then we lost him.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely looks frozen, unless he's an expert at staying completely still.
I don't have the video for him at all. I believe he is truly, truly gone.
Still shows up as a participant. Let's give him a second. Harry. All right, well, we actually don't need Harry for this one, but we're going to need him in a second. All right, I, I will vote aye, and we can have the vote be three, nothing right now. I think we've lost Harry, but that is okay. So Jim, oh.
All right.
Harry, are you back?
I think I am.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Can I get a vote from you on that motion?
Yeah, aye.
All right, all right, there you go, Jim. You got an unanimous vote. It took a little while, but
All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and folks, I am recusing myself from the last two items, so I'm going to leave, and James hopefully has audio.
Hopefully I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, all right. Good luck, folks. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
All right, the next item on our agenda, as we continue along, is Herbology Group, Inc., DBA Pleasantry's at one ninety-five North Hampton Street with some notification of change of control and special permit update. Is anyone here to speak to this tonight?
Yes, hello, how are you this evening?
Hello, good evening. What do you have for us?
So my name is Brian Wickersham. I serve as Chief Development Officer for Pleasantry's. I think the last time this project may have come to this group may have been a different face in front of you. Jane Hauman previously led most of these conversations. So just to connect the dots, I, I did send out a little slide deck ahead of time to kind of walk through a little bit of the conversation here. But as previewed, wanted to discuss the change of control situation through the CCC and update the Planning Board, as well as discuss some, some minor changes, while also being able to provide a little virtual walkthrough of our site and discuss our, our opening day plans as we start to get closer to that exciting time. Also on the phone or I'm in the meeting with me, Zach Wilson, he's our Director of Retail. I'm actually sitting in the state of Michigan right now, where Zach is our local boots-on-the-ground Massachusetts leader. To, to dive right into the change of control aspect, in November two thousand and twenty, the CCC formally approved changing the name of the company from Herbology Group to Pleasantry's, Inc. Subsequently, a transaction took place where Jane Hauman, who was previously the hundred percent owner of herb Pleasantry's, Inc., formerly known as Herbology Group, transferred sixty percent of her ownership interest to PBM Enterprises, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Emerald Growth Partners, which is who I work for. And we do business commonly as Pleasantry's. So here in Michigan, we have a operating vertical operation. We're super excited to expand to Massachusetts as our second state. The change of control at the CCC was approved in mid-February, and we sent a letter on March fourth to Mayor LaChapelle and, and Mr. Bag, notifying them of all of these facts that have taken place, but I wanted to also offer up the information to the Planning Board in case there were any questions related to the overall change of control, change of name, different faces on the scene, and just offer an opportunity for any conversation there if need be. Otherwise, I, I can continue and take all questions at the end if that's preferred as well.
Why don't we continue through the presentation, and we'll do questions from the Planning Board and, and the public after.
Certainly. And then does the, would it be helpful if I, I shared my screen a bit?
Yeah, Curtis, can you give him the power?
You got it. You're, you're co-host.
All right.
No, 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 you're also fine, James, but Brian, you should have co-host.
Okay.
Okay, if you guys could just firm, you can see that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so talk through the, the change in control. I'm going to turn it over to Zach, and you'll see his lovely face to talk through just our, our general licensing status update at the CCC level, and he's also going to provide a virtual walkthrough of the site, and I'll be clicking through for you there, Zach.
Cool. So how's it going, everybody? Nice to meet you. So I am the Director of Retail for Pleasantry's in Massachusetts. Right now, as far as CCC licensure, we have our post-provisional inspection on five twenty. If everything goes well there, then we can hopefully get on the mid-June, sometime around June fourteenth agenda to then get voted in to be given our final license. At that point, we can start accepting in product, start tagging things in metric to show that we are adequately stocked and able to then open, and then we have that commence operations inspection, so that'll be the kind of final, final inspection. And then that does not need to wait for an additional kind of meeting, so, you know, twenty-four hours, seventy-two hours after that commence operations, as long as there's no bumps in the road, no deficiencies, which, again, we've already had kind of the interview process to go over all the new SOPs, different processes and stuff that we're changing, and that's all been approved, so we don't see anything coming in the way. But again, we're, we're still open to, you know, kind of waiting for them, but realistically, I think, you know, everything goes smooth and according to plan. We could be open as early as, you know, early to mid-July, but then again, there's always stuff that happens. So that's pretty much it as far as where we are with licensure in East Hampton, as far as kind of the virtual walkthrough. If Brian wants to scroll down. So this right here is the entrance from the main road. We will have kind of an enter here sign on both sides of this. So it'll be enter here with an arrow pointing right, and then enter here with an arrow pointing left. The one on the, the one on the left side will be right up on the fence, and the one on the right side will actually be posted into the ground and kind of angled a little bit more, so it'll catch everybody to be sure, hey, this is where you're going. Oh, yeah, and then down over here too, I don't know, I couldn't actually see it. Go back to that first one, Brian. That was covered by the little faces. So down over to the right, that right there is the exit. So that'll have, again, on posts, do not enter sign right to the left of that, to make sure it's clear. Again, two signs saying enter, do not enter, so I can go through.
I'm sorry, can I just ask, I, I didn't quite catch it. Where is that sign going to be posted?
The do not enter, it'll be posted in the grass on like two sticks right in front, so move a little bit to the left, Brian. Yeah, so it'll be like right off the road, right in that grass.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. And then on the backside of this, so this is that enter here, so we'll have the two signs of it showing enter here. On the backside, on the left, again, in the posts in that grass, a little more up, Brian. There you go. So that'll just be big do not enter signs, so again, showing that people, and then again, on the other side of that to the right, posted into the ground. That'll be a big do not enter sign to make sure that nobody will be able to enter through there. There will be an exit sign over here to the left on the other sign, kind of clearly pointing exit with the arrow there. This is the, actually, go back one more, Brian. So there'll also be kind of an A-frame sign over here, right on this island, pointing people in the direction, you know, on, online orders are going to go to the left, and then it kind of swoops all the way around the driveway over, around the building, and then in-store pickup, so either online orders that want to pick it up in-store, they can kind of go over to the right, and they'll park in this first section. So then you can go to the next. So this over here to the left will be kind of the line of cars if there is for curbside, but that gives us plenty of room to have that all enclosed in the fence in case we're at the point where, you know, we have twenty-five cars in a curb sideline. Again, I don't see that being an issue to start, but also that gate back there will stay locked. It's never going to be opened. We do have locks for the fire department, so if they need access, because the hydrant is back over there, so they can get through it really quick, but we won't be doing any deliveries, anything. Nobody's allowed in or out of that. So that'll stay sealed. These other spaces over here, there's six spaces. That's where we're going to do our curbside parking. Nope, go back up.
All right.
Yeah, so these spaces right on this picture, back next to the light post. Those will be our six curbside parking spots. They'll be numbered as well, and then people can get their order, and then they pull out exiting opposite where they entered. So again, bringing that right out to that exit, keeping a constant kind of flow in loop for the traffic. Now, this is kind of the main entrance, so once people come into the facility, they're now parked their car, getting ready to enter in. This is what they see, so over on the right is going to be the entrance, and then over on the left is going to be the exit. Inside that entrance, there's also a little check-in lobby that separates. It's still a locked door that separates it from the sales floor. So the nice part about this is we can have this, you know, just be as-is. People can come, open the door, walk in like normal. It doesn't feel like, you know, you have to actually go through security yet just to get in the store, but at that check-in facility, that's when we run their IDs. We make sure that we have an ID scanner. We check them into the system, and then we allow them access into the sales floor. So this is right when you enter the sales floor, coming from that check-in space. So right there, you'll be greeted with somebody. That person will kind of confirm if you're an online order, or if you're looking to make kind of modifications in-store. So the online orders, all the way over to the right, you can see kind of the stanchions and where the wall breaks through. So that's where everybody will be expedited. If you already have an online order, you come in, you pick it up, and then you can exit pretty quickly. Anybody else that needs to make any modifications will be directed over to these tables, so the three tables in the middle. That's where they can work with a sales guide to kind of either bring them over into the consultation room, or if they feel comfortable talking about it out on the sales floor, they can then have that conversation right then and there, looking at the different display cases. So we will have live products in those display cases. They will all be locked and secured, but the nice part too is behind the register, you see the windows. So we are different to the point where a lot of other dispensaries will keep all their product out on the floor. It'll just be kind of right behind that point of sale. So it makes it kind of a, an issue where it is, makes you susceptible to theft. So doing it this way, getting that fulfillment done out at the tables, and then it gets kind of packaged in the back to then be brought out as the final product, to then just be there for the sale, kind of keeps us to then be brought out as the final product, to then just be there for the sale, kind of keeps us a little bit more risk averse. So if you go to the next slide. So then, once everybody at the three tables figures out what they want, their order gets placed. It then starts getting pulled in that fulfillment area. They'll be told kind of the register to go up to. And then depending on if there's a line, of course, they either can go right up, start talking with the sales guides, building kind of accessory orders, any other kind of last minute things that they wanted to do. And then finalizing the order. They do also get their identification checked at the final point of sale as well. That's a requirement by law and also kind of written into our SOPs. Just to kind of confirm, hey, this is the right person that we spoke to. This is the correct order. And again, that that person is allowed in the dispensary because they're twenty-one or older. And then everybody just exits right out that exit door, right to the left. All of these other doors you see there with limited access signs all on it, they have, they're all deadbolt locked with security keys and a keypad. So even if somebody stole my key card, they would still need to know my individual, you know, four-digit PIN to be able to have access to any of that stuff. But other than that, that's pretty much kind of the walkthrough.
Great. Thank you, Zach. And then just to, to lead right into the minor updates that we are requesting to the 2018 special permit, I'm going to keep Zach moving in terms of the opening day plan. And then I'll touch base on the approved plans.
Absolutely. So I've met with East Hampton Police Department. Originally in the opening day plan, again, this was back in 2018. I actually was in the industry then and it was kind of crazy where you needed that police detail, you needed it. There was only, you know, three stores on the East Coast. After talking with them, you know, they're very happy with our security plan already. We will have security guards there anytime we're open. We are going to do kind of the first week. In the opening day plan, it did say that they were going to do it for the first month and then kind of judge it from there. But again, I've deferred kind of to the East Hampton Police Department saying, hey, if we do this day one and it's crazy and we're going to need you for, you know, the rest of time, then okay, we'll do it. But realistically, I just think that was kind of in the opening day plan because of the time. Kind of along those same lines is the queue prevention and management. There was a lot of wording in there about appointment only, you know, no lines, no anything. Being able to manage it again, because in 2018, it was all about managing the lines. Again, I, I don't see there being an issue. We do have a plan in place. You know, if we get more than fifteen cars in that parking lot, we will have a permanent parking attendant outside helping manage that flow. So, you know, it's, it's definitely something that we're mindful of, but I don't think making it appointment only is necessary in the opening day plan.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just to transition to the last item and then open it up. And, and I guess just to touch on those two that Zach just mentioned, I think it's worth noting that, you know, we, we do not take security and safety lightly. Our camera unclosed circuit security system that we have in place there was, was reveled by the, the police department that walked through, called it a model for, you know, others to follow. When we had our CCC inspection last week, our, our verbal interview part of the process, our inspector was incredibly pleased with our SOPs related to security, safety, queue management. So as it relates to the police detail, we're, we're very much in favor of taking the direction of, of the local police. And after, you know, testing it out, just to be very clear on what we're asking for, after utilizing them for opening day, essentially taking their direction and whether or not they think we need it or not. And we'll be okay with whatever their direction is based on how successful we are. I think that the point about the time lapse between when this is approved, when this was approved three years ago and what we're asking for now is certainly valid in, in both instances. The, the change in the site plan, so this is related to a two-foot lattice that was proposed to go on top of the six-foot stockade privacy fence that was put up around the perimeter of our parcel. The particular detail related to this, and I'm going to slide this over real quick, is located on sheet C four of the decision and approved plans. And it's this two-foot lattice here that goes up and above the, the stockade into, again.
I can't see that. I don't know if it's something you have to stop sharing and reshare.
Yeah, I probably do. Let's stop. Thank you for stopping me. Let's try this again.
Got it.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay. So this, this two-foot lattice was proposed to go in between the port posts throughout the property and around the, the perimeter of it, with the exception of where the gates are. To put it into perspective, because I think it's helpful and I'm, I'm not sure, you know, how many of you have actually had the opportunity to drive the site at all. But the privacy fence that was installed, I'm just going back to some of the photos, is, is certainly substantial and meaningful in size. It's our opinion that we believe that this still accomplishes what the original intent was related to this fence, which, which reading through the past minutes, my understanding was it was related to just creating a sense of privacy there to shield the view from neighbors and as well as just creating an additional length of security for the neighboring properties. The defense itself is, is very impressive. I would use that word. If you go onsite and just look at the general span and how large it is. And again, I think it accomplishes the intent. I'm, I'm asking for that requirement to be removed, not because, you know, it was intentional of me not to do that. Frankly, I, I don't have a good answer for why it was done. And I'm still working through some disagreement conversations with, with the contractors and architects involved as it relates to, you know, what the actual story is as to why that lattice is not there. There's a few different theories currently at play that, that, you know, I'm working on on my backend. So, you know, I, I would say for one, apologies that it had not been done. But, but two, I, I truly believe that it still captures the original intent of what the fence was put into place for. The lattice is simply an aesthetic feature.
Well, I'm not sure if it's aesthetic. I, I can't recall the conversation. I don't have the meeting minutes in front of me. I don't know, Curtis, if you had an opportunity to look at them or if others have. But I thought that lattice was a result of the discussions with the property owners behind with the daycare, that they wanted that additional, additional screening. So I would want to make sure that if that's something that the herbology committed to, that this also, this, you know, that Pleasantry is also commits to the same agreement that they made with the property owners adjacent.
I tend to agree with you. Just one second. I tend to agree with you. Chris, I was thinking the same thing. And in fact, I have a question, other questions too, but I just want to make sure you're done with the, that you've covered. Do you have any other items, any other changes or?
No, sir.
Okay. First off, that really stood out to me too, Chris. I think you, you hit the nail on the head. Personally, I do think the fence is a decent barrier. However, that, the reason that was added in was an offering, as I recall from the meetings, when working with neighbors that were very concerned about this project to frankly, make this condition go through. It was offered by the developer at the time, the applicant at the time, as an acquaintance to, to the neighbors. And it was agreed on and, you know, that the project got approved and went through. But changing it now is a little difficult. I think we'll need to talk about it. But I do think that it's, it's potentially against the agreement in, you know, in its intent. Whether or not the fence is high enough, it, it's, it's a change of intent. I, I'd like to talk about the police component a little bit too. Frankly, I agree. I think times have changed. The need for, for the, the, the police to be there for the full month is probably less. If I understand correctly, what you've said is you're going to have a police detail for a week, seven days, and are requesting not to have it for a month. Can I confirm that that was the change?
I believe that the proposed change in, in Zach, please correct me if I'm wrong. But the, but, but the conversation that with you and the police captain was to have the police detail for the first day and then go from there.
He, when I, when I said the week, he said he doesn't see it needing to go that far. But our conversation with him was, hey, let's do it the first day, see how it goes and then keep an eye on it.
So my thought in this is, you know, overall, I, I really don't see a problem with that except for one thing. I, do you have a letter from the police department stating any of this?
We do have the sign-off from the police department.
Saying that, you know, one day should be enough?
I don't know if they specifically call out one day being enough.
I mean, I tend to agree with everything you've said in terms of let's go with what the police department says and, and that times have really changed. And I think that you're probably accurate in that, but I need to, you know, I need it from them clearly.
Yeah.
All right. So the other piece there was about not putting together a queuing plan. Is that, is that right? You are going to.
Yeah, not doing an appointment, an appointment only plan.
Not doing an appointment only, okay.
I have to say at this point, as we near the end of COVID and as we have several facilities open up, on that one particular point, I personally have no problem. I think, I think we're there. But I'd like to hear from the board on any of these other issues. Does anyone else on the board, Chris, Harry, you have anything you want to add?
I have one thing that I've noticed. I, I, I have to commend you. I think the, the parking lot and the, and the building look great. The interior looks great. The landscaping looks pretty terrible. There's a lot of dead shrubs from these photos. And I know we approved a planting plan. Do you have an agenda to replant and replace all the dead shrubs around your perimeter of your, and to comply with your planting plan?
Absolutely. I actually, and I had that conversation today, Brian. I, I don't even think I told you about it yet. But I talked with Pioneer Landscaping, they're the guys who installed it. And they came out at first, we thought, hey, there was a little bit of a drought, like kind of what happened. He looked at it and there's maybe three that are good. You know, if it was three that were bad, yeah, maybe it could be that. So, so he's looking at it from who the vendor he got it from, but we're absolutely getting that replaced and also looking at, you know, maintaining it, continuing to feed it, all that stuff. But absolutely. Believe me, I do not want it looking like that.
No.
Anything else, Chris?
No, I'm, I'm fine otherwise.
Carrie?
Yeah, the only concern I have is that fence in the back. That's about it.
And is it just the back? That's the thing. I think it might be the whole perimeter and I don't know if.
You talking about the lattice?
The lattice, yeah. I don't know what, what the limits were. We have to go back to the conditions to see what the requirements were on it.
Okay. So my thinking here is that what I'd like to do, and I know that you're on a tight timeline because you're talking about opening in July. And, and, you know, I, I think that it's possible when we look at this, that we may still think that these things are minor. But there's a couple of issues we have to look at. We have to spend a little more time now that this has been brought to us, reviewing and going back to review the video to try and remember precisely why that lattice was added, if we have some inkling. And then kind of make a decision on it ourselves. And we also, I would love to see if you could acquire a note from the police confirming, you know, police chief confirming what you've said and that, and that they're perfectly fine with the, with the one day. That would go a long way to making me feel that that's, that's good. You know, I mean, these were things that were agreed upon in the special permit. The neighbors were a part of them to just change them now. And I understand it's new ownership. It's, it, it, and I don't think it's disingenuous from you, but it'll seem disingenuous as part of the process then. We really don't want that. That's not good for a relationship for.
Yeah, no, and I, I, if, if you don't mind, I'm sorry, I, I really do appreciate that. And I want to be very clear that it is not, it is not a intentional action to try to walk back on any of the commitments that were made by Herbology Group. It has always been our instance and our intention to follow through with every commitment that was made, including, you know, with the butter mitigation efforts that, that had to go in place, just being good neighbors in general. I, I, I don't, I wouldn't be afraid to, you know, state pretty confidently that I, I think our neighbors at All About Children in Overlook Industries, who are our most prominent neighbors, are having a better experience since perhaps there was a, a change of guard in terms of just our overall communication efforts and, and how we interact and how we prefer to interact. I am definitely supportive of, of that and, and certainly supportive of interacting with them on this particular topic itself and, and gathering their, you know, opinions, I think is valuable. While I know this isn't a public meeting, knowing that we were coming forth to talk about this, I, I did invite the neighbors to, to participate or at least observe in, just in the sake of candidness and transparency. It, it's our goal to be good neighbors.
Great.
At the end of the day, the biggest challenge that we have is, you know, simply with the size and of that particular fence and the, the length of it, the, the cost, and I know this isn't necessarily important to everybody, but the cost of that fence alone is a hundred and sixty grand. And I'm terrified to look at the cost to go pull all those posts. Because the, the, the issue that, you know, one of the reasons of why I, I, I've, I've heard this ended up the way that it did is that the posts, the foundational posts, vertical ones were only eight foot. And the problem is the frost line to get beneath it is four feet. And it was frankly, a, a little bit of a design flaw by the, the civil who drew it up that way. But the, the fix is literally pulling all of those foundational posts and replacing them with ten footers.
I understand. I mean, that's, that's a painful burden. I think we're going to have to look at that. We're going to have to balance it. This might be a good segue to see if there's anyone from the public here that, that became. Is there anyone here from the public? You can raise your hand virtually or otherwise that wants to speak on this? I don't see anyone. Does anyone see?
Good evening. Karen, good evening. It's Karen Pilgrim from All About Children.
Oh, Karen.
Hi, hi, Brian. Hi, Zach.
I'm so glad you're here. You're exactly who I wanted to hear from.
How can I help you?
Well, what do you think about everything that's been presented?
Agreed upon that it was going to be an eight-foot fence. That's, that's what had been said. I myself, looking at it from our playground out to the back of Pleasantry's, I'm comfortable with how the back looks. It's very, you know, it's very sheltered in. Looks secure, but I know that John Moran from Overlook has some concerns. And I'm not sure if he was able to make it here tonight or not. So is that helpful? I don't know, but I do know that it was an eight-foot fence that was agreed upon. And that's, that's, I guess, what I can say.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
Okay. I, I'm, what I interpreted from that is that it was eight foot and I think we all agree on that. There was a reason for that. That's a concern. We need to talk about it. But that as it stands, if we were to decide that it's minor enough of a change for it to stay at six, you're actually, it, it is okay for you, maybe not the other neighbor, but for you, that's six. Did I, did I understand that correctly?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's helpful. Thank you. I mean, I think honestly, Brian, if, if you went to the year butters your neighbors and asked them the same question and asked them to either put it in a letter or come to a meeting and share their concern, their, you know, their feedback, that would, that would help us too. I think a letter is probably the easiest. They don't have to come to the meeting. But just to make sure that the people, because we don't know what herbology, what their negotiations and discussions were with the neighbors. We just know that it, finally, the neighbors were on board. So that would be helpful for us to understand, you know, if the neighbors are accepting of this six-foot fence.
Certainly. I, I appreciate that and I, I can see what I can do there.
Thank you.
I mean, it may be a situation where, you know, we, again, I think what I'm leaning on this is that we're going to try to push this to our next meeting, try to get some kind of information from the police department confirming what you've said, which makes that easy. Try to get some kind of information from the police department confirming what you've said, which makes that easy, in my opinion. We've heard from one neighbor. I know there's another one on the other side that's directly involved. We'd like to hear from them if possible. You can't make them show up to a meeting, but if you can, if it's possible just to do what Chris said and get something in writing from them.
Yeah.
And if they can't and don't, then, you know, it is what it is. But, you know, it's interesting that because of the way this is done, it's not a public notice. We have to rely on you to do that.
Listen, I have no problem doing that. I am, like like I said, I am very. It is imperative to me in in being, operating in the cannabis space to. Defeat the stigma. And I can't do that without partnering with my neighbors and providing an open book. And being, you know, a a good community neighbor. So you have my commitment to incorporate all neighbors through the end of this project and even throughout operations.
Yeah, good. And as it is, it's a pretty formidable fence when you look at it. So I think adding another two foot does actually increase us potential stigma. Why is there an eight-foot gigantic fence around this property? What's going on in there?
All right. Was there anyone else from the public? I'm sorry.
I will say I I did find the letter that I got from the police chief. It was more just on kind of the approval of the security and site plan. I'm gonna talk with him and get something a little bit more solid, specifically on like the opening day and ready.
Perfect. Yeah, that there was only one day of police detail and you put the plan if you need more days or whatever, some something to clarify that for us.
All right, was there anyone else from the public that wanted to speak on this?
I'd like to provide a comment here.
Please.
So first, I want to confirm what representatives of Pleasant Trees have just been saying. The planning staff were CC'd in on emails to the butters that provide them copies of the agendas here. I just want to, I just want to confirm that without any further commentary. Second. A second follow.
The day, the date of the meeting?
Yeah, that's definitely one we need to do.
Right. Oh, no. So one thing I wanted to make sure, so we we're, it sounds like the board is planning to continue. The board has been discussing this as a minor change. Presuming that no additional change, this isn't really something, it's going to be hard for the board to say this. But I want to avoid a circumstance in which the representatives of this company come forward again. And then there's another thing that makes it a major change, you know, like if in trying to resolve this. It then is determined that they would need to reopen the hearing. So my understanding, and I just want to be clear with the board, is that the board is saying the changes that we're reviewing are going to be minor changes. If the things that you can bring forward are brought forward in a way that is palatable to us.
I would say I think the answer is yes. I I mean, I need to, well, I want to take the temperature of both Chris and Harry on this. But for me, for me, if if the neighbors are good, and it's possible the other neighbor might not be good with the fence. In which case, we might ta- talk about maybe running a a a height enhancement for that section alone. That might be a possible. There might be a middle ground, but hopefully that isn't, I mean, because that just makes it ugly. Hopefully that isn't the case. So I would say if the neighbors come back and say, well, it's fine, the fence is high enough, that would be a minor change for me personally. If the police department comes forward and says one day is adequate, that would be a minor change for me personally.
Agree.
Harry?
Yeah.
Okay, did that give you what you need, Curtis?
Yeah, and and then to the representatives of Pleasant Trees. So that strikes me that you'd be interested in rescheduling as soon as possible, rather than rescheduling at such a time. This we could advertise for a public hearing and properly notice all parties for a new public hearing. Which would require a newspaper advertisement to the additional delay, right?
Correct. As soon as possible would be ideal. From from my perspective, if if, you know. If you guys meet two weeks from now, I'm not sure when you meet, but if you do. Yeah.
That'd be fine.
In two weeks, in two weeks, I'm either gonna have it or not. I mean.
Yep, they just needed to chart out those possibilities.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion time.
In that case, I think, yeah, a motion to continue.
All right, I make a motion to continue Herbology Group Inc., DBA Pleasant Trees. At one ninety-five North Hampton Street for the determination of a minor change to June first, two thousand twenty-one at six P M.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Chris?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
And I am an I. Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks.
In two weeks. Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
All right, moving forward, we have one final item on our agenda tonight. And that is High Five nineteen Womalkaway with updates to their two thousand twenty-one special permit. Is anyone here to speak to this?
Yes, I am Kevin Perry from Five Star Building Corp. How are you, James?
Hey, Kevin.
Hi there.
What you got for us tonight?
So the the plans have changed a bit there, just in terms of timing and sequencing. So originally, the plan was to open manufacturing cultivation in one swoop. That has since changed and the projects received funding, but it'll, it's going to open first in manufacturing only. Excuse me, allergies are getting to me. I don't have a timeline for cultivation at this time, you know, it's it's, I I think it's safe to say it's probably over a year out. By the time the CCC and things, we build manufacturing, it gets licensed, it opens cash flows there. So I I don't think that's on the the short-term horizon, but the manufacturing is. The only real reason to come back, and I'm not sure if Curtis briefed you or not, is because our our stipulation. Was to have an odor control mitigation plan for the cultivation approved prior to building permit application. And we don't have that designed because we're not going forward with the cultivation right now. So it's strictly the manufacturing portion, which really has no odor control to it. Simply the plan is to buy distillate. And basically, you're you're making vape pens, things like that and processing that in in a production room. It'll also have a kitchen, but that's really a self-contained kitchen to make items such as chocolate and things like that. There's not even a grease hood required or anything. So there's really no mitigation plan to be had right right now.
Okay, may I ask a few questions?
Sure.
I'm just gonna toss these out there and I don't claim to be expert in any of these things. So I'm sure, you know, you may or may not have the answers, but I've been told that sometimes manufacturing involves. For certain things like waxes and such, highly volatile, butane and other compounds like that. Are you doing any of that?
The extraction method right now, well, first, we're not even sure that if we will go, if the budget will allow that extraction will take place. The most likely guaranteed scenario or the definite path forward is we purchase the distillate from other cultivators. So we do have, want the option and there is a chance that the budget allows we will be doing extraction. But most likely, it will be CO2 extraction. There is the possibility, our license does allow it. And the building would certainly allow it to go with a ethanol extraction. But if you do, typically what happens in this case is we will purchase what's known as a prefab C one, D one room. Which is where the ethanol is stored and the extraction takes place. And that, you know, we have discussed that with the the fire captain in the past before going to planning. And simply, you know, they just wanted to see the plan and approve that plan before we actually install the the unit.
Does that process have emissions of any kind that that might produce odors? That's why I ask, because I know that, you know, obviously, you know, growing has odors. And that would be a primary reason for an odor mitigation plan. Removing that, it removes primary reason. So I want, I'm just looking at these off cases just to see what else might produce odors. And you're talking about already having a distillate and cooking with it and sort of indicating that that isn't going to produce any odors. And therefore, maybe you're not including, you know, HIPAA or HIPAA, excuse me. Filtration, ventilation, you know, and a whole plan for it. Are you, do you still have ventilation and do any of these things produce odors?
There are certain things that could come up down the road that could produce minimal odors. I would say the bulk of the odors that you're gonna have from from when you smell, for example, if you're out back at the bike path. What you're smelling coming from inset typically is coming from their grow operation or their ventilation that's venting, you know. However, many thousand square feet, they probably have fifty thousand or more, I'm guessing, at the, I'm not sure what tier they are of the canopy. So the extraction would take place, perhaps, you know, if you do it once a week for perhaps a a couple hours a a day, something like that. But it really makes very minimal odor. I don't think that's anything that would cause an issue. If it does, that's certainly, you know, speaking with the Board of Health. We would address it at that time. And basically, the fix is install a carbon filter. There's not, you know, you don't have a lot of leeway with that like you do when you're doing, you know, the the cultivation. In fact, the venting for both CO2 and ethanol extraction is simply a foreign vent. It's it's almost like a dryer vent. No, it's it's really just for any. It's it's actually heat hood, so it's any type of steam or anything like that 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 comes off of it. So it's it's a much different setup and that is not a specific HVAC system like you'll have with the grow. That system will actually supply the entire manufacturing facility, including the the admin space. So certainly, we don't want odors, you know, coming from those rooms and going through admin. So we're really not concerned about that, but that will be one mechanical system serving everything.
Okay. So if we were to find this minor and you were to come back later and add the grow component. Curtis, is there a trigger that we would get another shot to look at an odor mitigation plan?
Yes, and I'm glad you asked, because I asked Kevin the same exact thing. Kevin informed me that the goal right now for the second half is that the project always had cultivation and manufacturing components. The cultivation buildout in its entirety is waiting, along with the associated building permits, fire permits and any other permits associated with that. So it means that when they're pulling a final building permit and a certificate of occupancy for the second portion of the building. That certificate of occupancy, or at least the building permits associated with buildout, will be subject to review by planning staff. And trigger them coming before the planning board.
So we don't need to put any approved as mi- as minor, given that there's no grow? We don't need to put a given in.
In fact, the the actual condition says prior to the start of cultivation on the site.
Okay, perfect.
Which is, which as the person who drafted it was actually a happy accident.
Good. Any questions from Chris or Harry?
No.
Both. I I personally see this as minor. Do you guys agree?
Yep.
Okay, any anyone from the public that wants to comment on this? I don't see anyone else here. Yeah. In that case, I guess we're looking for a motion to approve. This is minor.
All right, I move to approve High Five at nineteen Womalkaway. The updates, I think this request for determination of a minor change is acceptable.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, Chris?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
And I am an I. Thank you, Kevin.
All right.
Generally, I think that's the end of our meeting. I don't know of anything else. Are there any announcements or anything, Curtis?
Just stuff coming up for next month's, or next, yeah, next month. So we're gonna see Kevin again. They're likely gonna be bringing forward a plan to put in Jim's Package Store at Two Adams Street. Their goal is to move forward with this soon. There, we just got plans today and we brought them forward for a pre-application meeting early next week. It's gonna be tricky finding parking and I just want to warn you guys about that upfront. You're entitled to make any decisions associated with it as possible. We want to make sure that we're getting all the good answers that we will need from the other departments as regards. Access, fire, accessibility for ADA compliance, et cetera. We've got the continuation of that one determination of minor change and otherwise should be pretty quiet.
Okay. All right, in that case, oh, go ahead.
I have a question. Are we getting any applicants for new board members?
Yeah, I asked the same question to Jesse before the meeting started and he said you had recommended somebody.
I did, and I was wondering if where he's at with it.
I've heard rumors that he's been found acceptable, but um, but I mean, that's as much information as I honestly have.
Hopefully that happens soon.
In fact, I I don't even know that he's a key. This person, this person is acceptable.
Yeah, I'm, there might be other applicants too. I don't know, it might not be him, but it it is a colleague of mine. A former colleague of mine who has no longer works at my company, so he's, it'll be good because it's not any conflict or anything. But yeah, okay, good to know.
Yeah, we definitely need to get another member here and an alternate. I guess we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, Chris?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Have a great night, my friends.
Thank you. Appreciate it.